Okay, we're going to call to an order Clayton City Council Meeting for March 19, 2019. I'll let the record reflect that all council members are present. If everyone could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The other mics need to be turned on too. C W and Jim, you need to turn your mics on too. None of these were on. Is it on?
Okay, our first item is Item 3, which is the Consent Calendar.
I would move approval of the Consent Calendar.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Our next item is Recognizations and Presentations. We do not have any today, so we move on to our reports. And I think first, we have Mr. Cloven for Planning Commission.
Greetings.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council people. We had a Planning Commission meeting last Monday, or last Tuesday, March 12th, and we got to welcome our new Planning Commissioner, Frank Gavidia, who joined us for the first time. There was one item on the Planning Commission docket, and that was zoning ordinance, or Z O A 0119. It's a municipal code amendment related to the sign amendment, or the sign ordinance. Previously, we had a sign ordinance which had a limit of 1 or 3 square feet with 1 sign per candidate or issue in a yard. It was brought to us by the Planning Department, a new ordinance which allowed for up to a 16-square-foot sign with no aggregate to be placed anywhere at any time. There was some spirited conversation among the Planning Commission members. There was quite a bit of discussion on the whole concept of freedom of speech and what this ordinance meant relative to that. After some discussion, it was brought up and firsted, if that's a better term, it was brought to vote, the ordinance as written. The second did not come. Additional conversation happened, and after that conversation was clear that none of us were going to be able to agree on the ordinance as written, or make any recommendations that would change the ordinance in a way that would be acceptable to us as a group that would receive 3 votes. To be clear, there were some that felt a stronger aggregate was necessary, and some that felt that absolutely no limit on freedom of speech would be necessary. After hearing the voices that were said that evening, we decided to have a vote to have absolutely no recommendation for the city council. And that vote passed, I believe it was 4 to 1. And that was the end of the meeting. We did say goodbye to Mindy Gentry and thanked her for her service to the city. And that was it. Any questions?
So it sounds like you had all commissioners present, though.
All 5 commissioners present.
Yes. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Then, we don't have a report from Trails and Landscaping Committee, City Manager Staff. Mr. Napper?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a follow-up with that, the revisions to the sign code will come to you at your next meeting. It's been noticed as such, so that'll arrive on your April 2 meeting. That's it.
Okay. Then, let's move on to City Council reports for council liaisons and regional committees and commissions and boards. Mr. Diaz, would you like to start?
I only have one meeting that I attended, and that was the March 6 meeting of the Contra Costa Water District, where they approved a number of vehicle purchases, as well as they also approved a contract with a new consultant to help them administer some of the things that they do at that level. That's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
I attended the Mayor's Conference in San Ramon on the 7th. On the 9th, the Library Foundation Annual Meeting and their 24th Birthday Celebration. On the 11th, celebrated privately Bob Hoyer's birthday, 98-years-old. But also attended the Joint Legislative Town Hall Meeting of Senator Glazer and Congressman Grayson. On the 15th, I attended the farewell celebration for Mindy Gentry at City Hall. And last night, attended the emergency preparedness meeting here in this room, where I would urge everyone to go to the city website that did not attend, because we did stream it, and you can view it. There was a lot of great information about what to do for earthquakes and fire and all the possible disasters that could happen here. And I think the most important thing that came out of the meeting that I didn't realize was that you have to register for the community warning system in Contra Costa County. It doesn't, warnings don't just automatically come to your cellphone. So if you go to COCO, C-O-C-O, CWS.us, you can register your phone and your various addresses and phone numbers and things like that. So you will be alerted to any disasters that pertain directly to you. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Pierce?
Yes, I attended the Contra Costa Transportation Authority Administration and Projects Committee Meeting. We reviewed the mid-year budget and are looking forward to the next year. The interesting point there is that sales tax revenues are projected to pretty much flatline and not continue to increase as dramatically as they have. They have been increasing rather remarkably, but they are not expected to continue to do that by all of the projections. So it's something that we all need to take note of and adjust accordingly. Also attended the Mayor's Conference in San Ramon. We had a presentation, a very short presentation, and then a Q and A on the CASA project. We, I also attended the Association of Bay Area Governments' joint meetings with the Legislative Committee and the Administration Committee with the MTC Planning and Legislation Committees. And I attended with C W last night, the Emergency Preparedness Meeting. And what I would add to what C W mentioned is, there is a video that takes up about 20 minutes of the program that is very, very good to watch. It talks about, in particular, how to create defensible space around your home, and it talks about particular plants that are not good to have near your home, many of which have been traditionally put right next to a house, things like junipers, which are somewhat explosive in the way that they burn. So in addition to a lot of the ones we're used to, that was one. The other thing that I think was extremely helpful to hear was from Assistant Chief Mike Marcucci, who is part of CAL FIRE and in charge of a good bit of the Bay Area. He said he wishes he could make this presentation to cities like Clayton all the time, because normally he has to give warnings about things that need to be fixed. He says Clayton is actually incredibly safe, and we are in very, very good shape. Because we're surrounded primarily by grasslands, and because we have well-disced borders around us next to the park, he said, "You are in much safer condition than almost any other city he visits." So, and you will hear them say that many times on this video. So it is worth watching, I think, and spending the time. It only was, what, an hour maybe of presentation, and then there were some Q and A, because we were out of here in an hour and 45 minutes. So it's worth spending the time. And there is a link right on the front page of the city's website, just got to scroll down from what comes up on your mobile device to be able to see where the link is. So that was it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Juan?
This, in the past couple weeks, I was invited to speak at a local Cub Scout meeting full of 9- and 10-year-olds. The topic that they were covering was the rule of law and how they could get involved in civic government even at their age. I thought it was really fun to do, talked to a lot of the kids. I've also coincidentally met with some of the Boy Scouts in town as well, talking about similar issues. So, other than that, I've spent the last 2 weeks talking with folks in town about Item 8 here that's on our agenda, and talked to a few dozen folks, just to get their input and their feedback, to get a pulse for what is, what's been going on.
Thank you. So for me, I also attended the Mayor's Conference in San Ramon on Thursday, March 7. And as Julie mentioned, the topic was CASA Compact. And what I found very interesting is, it was very informative, especially from the perspective that we heard from a lot of our neighbors as to how they are very constructively evaluating it, and in a way, I think, that will actually get their voices heard. So it was very informative from that perspective. I also had Mayor's Office Hours last Saturday morning, and we'll have Mayor's Office Hours again this Friday from 4 to 5 at City Hall. And anybody's obviously free to stop by if you have any questions or concerns. So with that, we'll move on to public comment. So this is the section of the meeting when any member of the public can address the council on any item that's not on today's agenda. I do have couple-speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to address the council, please certainly fill out a card, and we'll have you speak. First speaker, Marcy Longchamp.
Members of the city, can you hear me?
I have a feeling it's not on. See if it's, can you see on the top?
Huh?
Hold on.
I don't have any idea how to turn it on. Sorry.
Oh, okay.
Members of the city council and city staff, I am Marcy Longchamps. First, I would like to thank Councilmen Jim Diaz and Jeff Wan for their attempt to do the right thing. Tonight, I am speaking on the subject of parolee housing and what transpired at the last meeting on March 5, 2019. Although my words are being directed at you, it is my intent to reach a far more broader audience tonight through this public platform. Perhaps others in our Clayton community will hear me now and reach out to their friends and neighbors. These are my opinions. At the last meeting, it was clearly indicated that the state's AB 109 and re-entry programs from the county are not imposing or pressuring any mandatory requirements for the city of Clayton. By the council's veto of having the city perform a more thorough analysis of our park on Coyote Circle, as well as an analysis of the Oakhurst Country Club, you are in fact admitting that Keller Ridge and Shell Lane will indeed be found exempt from parolee housing. In my opinion, your veto is a perfect example of the lack of due diligence which you have continued to maintain since the inception of Ordinance 483. You know as well as I do that the analysis will find us exempt, but your paranoia of a de facto ban overrides your decision to choose safety over money. Your decision has left me, as well as others, in utter disbelief. You haven't just thrown our 2 areas under the bus, you have kicked each and every citizen of Clayton to the curb. If the council thinks that parolees are going to limit their daily activities to merely Coyote Circle and Shell Lane, I am afraid you are sadly mistaken. This ordinance is going to affect each and every citizen of Clayton, no matter where you live. Please, Clayton, we must fight this together as a community. This is political. Let us not make the safety of our children and the elderly a political game. I will end tonight with some words that come to mind and their definitions. Deceit: the action or practice of deceiving someone by concealing or misrepresenting the truth. Dishonesty: deceitfulness shown in someone's character or behavior. Deception: the action of deceiving someone. And finally, integrity: the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles, moral uprightness. I appreciate my 3 minutes.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Ann Stanaway.
Ann Stanaway, 1553 Haviland Place, Clayton. Carl, this is directed at you. You went to emergency preparedness? Do you ever think about the fact that the emergency crews can't get to some houses because the fire lanes are blocked? Hmm, well, let's, yeah, think about that one. Okay, so the next thing is, I want to mark this on my calendar, and everybody else should mark it on their calendars as well, because we are witness to how the sausage is made here in Clayton by a group of people who are politically motivated only. And rule of law doesn't matter here. It's just political motivation and political patronage. So the sausage will be made today, and Charlie, good luck to you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Teri Denslow.
Thanks for the time to speak. So during our last meeting, I spoke briefly with a plea to city council members and citizens alike to work through our differences with compassion, accountability, respect, and to remember that we write the history of today for generations to come. Through the retrospective eyes of history, we often don't assimilate our actions of now with those of our ancestors. We're doomed to repeat the ills of the past when we avoid this mirror of self-reflection. When we, as a city, residents and council-like, ponder the development and adoption of loopholes in the name of safety and comfort that inherently prohibit others from residing amongst us, I question how we are trekking a route any different than Jim Crow laws of the past adopted under the same fear-based notions. Last meeting, I heard a resident question if the Planning Commission could review parolee applications with additional apprehensive scrutiny beyond the allowance of the ordinance. I also heard a council member suggest building additional certifications or expertise requirements into the conditional use permits. If this is the route that we, as a city, choose to pursue, the good news is, we don't have to start from scratch. We have poll taxes and literacy tests of the early 20th century to draw upon for policy, language, and corporations into our Clayton-worthiness test. Whether it be discussions about the size of yard signs, parolee housing, parking mirror, Mount Diablo, downtown development, or other such topics, when we seek policy development with fear as our basis, fear of the unknown, fear of blight, fear of legal ramifications, when fears drive our decisions, we lose our basic moral compass. My plea to both Clayton residents and council members alike is the same. Let's communicate in a constructive and respectful manner to work through our differences, and spend our energy on policy development that serves as a positive example and guiding principles for other communities of California. Let's not be known as the city of exclusionary tactics and petty self-interest-driven initiatives. How about we just treat others like we'd want to be treated?
Great, thank you. I don't have any other speaker cards, but if there's anyone else who would like to address the council on any non-agenda item?
Non-agenda.
Non-agenda, we'll come to that, you're on next. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Our next item is public hearings. We have none, which gets us to Item 8A, which is an action item, which is the consideration of a resolution establishing a residential permit, a preferential residential permit, parking permit pilot program, that's way too many Ps in there, designated portions of the Regency Drive and Rialto Drive neighborhoods to alleviate on-street parking issues associated with hikers and users of the nearby Mount Diablo State Park Regency Gate Trailhead. I think we will start with a report from our Chief of Police.
Good evening. Okay, so we're here to discuss the proposed City of Clayton...
Chief, can you pull the microphone a good bit closer? Your voice is kind of soft.
Okay, so we're here now to discuss the proposed City of Clayton Preferential Residential Permit Parking Pilot Program. We got here based on residents' concerns that were brought to the attention of the council on May 5, 2018, during public comment. On January 15, 2019, the council met at a regular meeting and heard concerns about the impacts of parking in their neighborhood of Rialto and Regency Drive associated with visitors and hikers using the public street to park their vehicles and access nearby Mount Diablo State Park. After the public testimony, the city council formed an ad hoc committee. That committee met on January 30, and it prepared findings which were presented at the February 5, 2019, city council meeting. At that meeting, council voted to direct staff to develop a possible residential preferential permit parking pilot program based upon the written findings of the ad hoc committee. Staff, including myself, was tasked with putting together a pilot program using the ad hoc committee's findings as a guideline basis. We also researched other cities' residential preferential permit parking programs, and based upon that research and the findings of the ad hoc committee, came up with the proposed pilot program. In summary, the pilot program is recommended to run for 12 months, commencing upon the completion of all the administrative tasks, along with signage installed and permits distributed, and of course, that's upon approval by you, council, of the pilot program. The pilot program will include portions of Regency Drive and Rialto Drive as determined by council under Options 1 and 2. Got a map. It's a little small. That's 1 and 2 side by side. That's Option 1, which is pretty much the entire length of Regency Drive, all of Rialto Drive, with the exception of areas that have no homes facing the street. And that's Option 2. So you can see in the side by side, there's a little bit difference of the perimeter. The pilot program, in basic terms, would allow the residents of the affected area to purchase parking permits from the city, allowing them to park on the street during the restricted days and times. The proposal includes Saturdays, Sundays, and federal holidays from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. That's when permits would be required. The cost of the permit would be $75 for the first permit, which includes 2 guest permits, and $55 for any additional permit. Those costs will also include 4 special event permits, which will allow 10 permits per special event per resident. The recommended fine for violations of the parking in the permitted area without a permit is $45. There is also a couple of options for the council to consider, which include allowing all Clayton residents who do not live in the restricted area to purchase 1 annual permit, and/or to allow the purchase of temporary 1-day permits by anybody who wants one, up to a maximum of 50 per day. So in the program, there are some decision points that the council will need to talk through. Those include the boundaries of the program, the number of permits, whether or not guest permits should be allowed, and if you want to consider Options A and B.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
I have a couple questions.
Councilmember Juan, go ahead.
Just a handful there, I think they're really brief. We chatted earlier, so. What was the rationale for limiting owner vehicles to 2 permits?
So when we did the inventory of street parking, there's approximately 115 available parking spots on Regency Drive, and there's approximately 50 homes. So if you do the math, that would allow essentially space for everybody to park their cars that had a permit, you know, give or take the guest permits. You know, additionally, every home has a minimum of 4 available parking spots on their personal property, so they should be able to park up to 4 cars on their property. So I felt that 2 was a reasonable number of permits, but one of the options is to allow the maximum to be the number of registered vehicles per residence.
And then, I guess, a similar question. What was the rationale for limiting guest passes to 2 as well? Is it similar in nature?
It's similar, and, you know, I think everybody realizes, the more permits that are issued, the more impacted the street will be with cars and available parking spaces.
Okay. With Option 2, since it covers less area, then I'm making the assumption that the overall cost would be less than Option 1, because the main driver of the startup cost is the cost of the signs?
The cost of the signs is one driver, it's not the main driver. The cost of the permit program is really staff time and all of the supplies that come with it, but staff time is probably the biggest driver of the cost.
Okay. I guess, yeah, I was trying to do the math on the overall distance, and I paced, not pace, I literally paced, but I paced via Google the distance in Option 1 and Option 2. And I think I came up with something like 50,000 feet of area affected on Option 1, and something close to 32,000 feet on Option 2. And based on the proposal that said 1 sign for every 100 feet, it worked out to whatever number of signs that is. So that's why I was kind of going with that.
Right. We figured the cost of the signs, if you go with Option 2, is about half of the cost of the signs of Option 1.
Okay.
But again, the driver for setting the fees at 75 and 55 is really the staff time involved in issuing the permits.
If we find, or actually, towards the end of the proposal, it talks about the grounds for revocation of the permit. On that section, it doesn't specifically say, it says violation of the terms. What do you contemplate would be violation of the terms?
If somebody purchased a permit for a vehicle that, you know, they showed us that was registered to their home, legally registered, and then didn't put that permit on that car, maybe gave it to a friend or a relative, that would be a violation of the terms. Not filling out the paperwork properly after being given the opportunity to do so, or, you know, refusing to provide information that's on the application form, lying on the application form, those are the ones that come to mind.
Okay. And if we find that the plan causes, if we were to enact this pilot, and we find that the plan causes some kind of unacceptable spillover to other areas, would, could we address that at the end, or sometime, or at the end of the pilot, to take the learnings that we would have and make other adjustments as needed?
I think I'll defer that to the city manager.
I'm shaking my head, yes. For instance, I know that over the weekend, it was very busy, I'm sure the residents will tell you that, but I was also informed and noticed that there were a considerable number of vehicles that were parked across the ravine on Mount Air Circle as well. And so as this program is introduced, and if it's, you know, in place, there will be that push-out to other areas based upon how far people are willing to walk. And if we find that there's additional residents that come in as a block, there's nothing that constrains the council to amend the pilot program to include additional areas. And you don't have to wait the full 12 months.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have right now.
Vice Mayor Pierce?
Yeah, based on the questions I just heard answered to, it does raise a question I had as I read the staff report. So if I understand correctly, the city would be absorbing the cost of the signage and the installation, is that correct? And then the fees actually pay for the staff time to issue the permits themselves and the materials required there?
Our role, we consider primarily to identify what we think the cost will be, first off. So the $60,000 for the signs and the pole installation, that's an enormous amount, but it's not based upon a contract. Could be less, could be more. Furthermore, it's not just signs that show that no parking is allowed, additional poles and signs will be directing people where they can park in those areas, such as the end of the spur line or the tongue down there. Whether you wish to fold in those costs to the permittees, that's a policy decision for the city council. I know that staff heard at the last meeting that the initial intent was to consider a full-cost recovery, but once again, that's a determination by you folks.
Maybe to clarify just a little bit, in the staff report, it talks about administrative costs, staff time costs, at about $46 an hour. And at this point in time, because we have not done this program before, we're estimating about an hour per permit from start to finish. And so I would say that, you know, the bulk of the cost is the administrative time and the papers and materials and ink and printers and all that, but there is some cost built in for sign recovery. Does that make sense?
It does, and that was kind of the answer I thought we were talking about. It's mostly the actual counter-time and administrative time to... It's mostly the actual counter time and administrative time to get the permits done, and then we have to figure out how much the signs are actually going to cost to produce and to be installed. And then we have the policy decision on whether the full city of Clayton should shoulder the burden of that or whether that should be built into the cost to the homeowners. That'll be a policy decision to be made once we have that answer back. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
I had my question answered.
Councilmember Diaz?
I have several questions. The signage that you're proposing, what does it say beyond "go here and park someplace else"? Is there going to be a verbiage on there that says violators will be subject to citation and fine? Or towing?
I believe there's a sample.
And unlike the signs that are currently down at the end of Regency, will they be visible enough and readable enough so people can understand them? You have that? I don't have that. Is it in this?
It was in the packet.
After those in the audit file, I'm looking for it.
I got it, I got it, I got it.
The revision says parking permit required on Saturdays, Sundays, and federal holidays, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Violators will be ticketed.
And towed?
Well, the towing aspect is something that the city attorney was involved in and perhaps...
And what did the city attorney have to say on that?
So that is discussed in the staff report, and the council can elect to have the penalty as towing, but it can't, the way that I read the vehicle code that permits towing, it can't be fine or tow. It's not an either or. I mean, it's not an and, it's an either or. We can either fine or we can tow. Towing takes a lot of time. A tow truck could take a half hour, 45 minutes to get to the location. It takes a lot of time for the officer to fill out the paperwork. And then on the flip side, somebody has to come down to the police department to get their car released. And now you're going to have a bunch of people that are basically left on Regency and Rialto Drive with no way to get anywhere. There's no public transportation there, the walk would be pretty far. So yes, the council can elect to impose the penalty as a tow, but it's our recommendation that the penalty be a fine. And when I looked at other programs throughout the state, I did not see any program where the penalty was tow. I saw the penalty was fines, and the fine that we set at $45 is right in line with what other cities in Contra Costa County use as a fine. And it's my belief that that fine would be a great enough deterrent that most people would not choose to park there and get ticketed.
Are you saying you don't have the resources to enforce it?
I am saying that we do not have the resources to enforce towing as the fine. We would tie up an officer probably all day long on towing vehicles from that location.
Let me offer a suggestion to you. Have you been in San Francisco where they have no parking after 3 o'clock on certain streets?
No, I have not.
Okay. There they have a tow truck, that within the tow truck is not only the tow truck driver, but also a meter maid or an officer who immediately signs the citation and puts it on the car. Then the tow truck backs up to them and hauls the car away. That only happens a couple of times, and people will get the message that you don't park down there and interrupt the flow of traffic or the residential area. Now, if you don't have the number of people on the force to do that, why don't you request something to do that? Let me give you another offer on that. You had a reserve officer at one time that retired for whatever reason. I would suggest you contact him or somebody like him and bring them back into the fold and maybe pay them four hours on a Saturday, Sunday, or holiday so that you do not interrupt your regular law enforcement activity. And that person's total responsibility is the enforcement of the rules down there on Regency Drive, which I mean, if they have to stay there for six hours and wait for a tow truck, that's what they do. They're not interrupted by other calls.
Okay.
Now, I think you have the funding in there. And the reason why I think you had the funding, because it seems to me we're authorized at how many officers?
10 officers.
10 and you?
And me.
Total of 11.
Yes.
Recently, didn't we somehow get up to 12?
We did.
How did that happen without council approval?
I will defer that to the city manager.
Councilmember, it was not a permanent position. The city council is the one to determine permanent positions. What we were doing administratively was staying within the budget, and according to the city resolution that adopts the budget, the city manager is charged with the responsibility to keep the budget balanced within the entire bottom line. So while we were knowing that some individuals, officers, were perhaps leaving and going to other agencies, I authorized the chief of police to commence recruitment in advance because, as you well know, that takes a while to hire individuals, screen them, go through post certifications, you know, polygraphs and psychologicals and whatnot, so that, and then bring the individual on. They cannot work solo until they pass field training, as you well know. So what I was trying to do was work within the confines of the monetary budget that the city council approved, that we would be able to sustain a full deployment of personnel.
That temporary person that you, and I believe his name was Alex Jung, is that correct?
That's correct.
He was brought on with the intent of becoming a full-time employee, correct?
Yes, he was.
But he did not pass probation, and so you terminated him, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So obviously, you had the flexibility in the budget to do and bring, augment somebody on. So back to my other suggestion about contacting Mr. Eddy or somebody like Mr. Eddy who could be redeputized or however you want to call it, and assign them only Saturday, Sunday, and holidays to enforce the provisions of the law that we were about, I guess, to vote on for down on Regency Drive. Could that be an option?
I suppose something like that could be an option.
Had you considered that?
I haven't considered it because I don't know what council is going to approve. So if council approves towing as the fine, then I will have to consider those options. If the council approves a monetary fine, I don't believe we would need that extra staffing, but it's something that I would explore.
I am not suggesting a fine. A fine is probably, you know, probably within the letter of the law. What I'm suggesting is putting that tow feature in there, because I am convinced, first of all, I headed a state agency for five years, which included regulatory and law enforcement. When we decided to enforce the law that we had responsibility for, very quickly, those people got the message when we cited them, fined them, hauled them in the court. They got the message. I believe that if you towed two or three vehicles down there, even if they're from out of the area, and if they misread the sign or whatever, and they had to foot over to downtown city hall to get their car out of hock, hey, you broke the law, this is what the penalty is. Further, and I've stated this before, in the 80s, this police department had half of the staffing that we have today. Yet, we had a reputation of enforcing the speeding laws within Clayton, and people were very aware of that, and they were very cautious when they came through Clayton and got cited for speeding 10 miles over the speed limit, either 25 or 35, whatever it was at the time. And I think there's still a little bit of that reputation out there. So all I'm offering is there are ways to think outside the box, come up with a reasonable way to really enforce that, because I don't think citing them and giving them a fine, the people that are going to be coming from outside the area, they may even carry that amount in their pocket. So I'm suggesting that we consider some additional higher penalty for improper parking or illegal parking down there. How many cars have you towed down there yet?
One or two.
One or two?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to see the information on that, because the last time I asked you that, you said, no, you didn't tow anybody, you only had 35 cars that you cited.
Right. And I was corrected that there was a vehicle towed for expired registration.
Okay. Anyway, I just suggest that we think outside the box and look at an increased level of enforcement, because I believe that if you did that on a regular basis, and if you had somebody that was dedicated to that, it would eventually go away. It would no longer be a problem, and I think the residents would be a hell of a lot happier. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Vice Mayor Pierce had another question.
Yeah, just a follow-up question to that, just to clarify the answer. If cars were towed, I think you said they'd have to go to city hall to the police department to get them cleared, to be able to retrieve them?
Yes. And the fee at city hall is $161 to have your car released, and then you have to pay the tow yard as well. So probably an average would be $300 or $400 to get your car back.
And because this would be enforced on weekends and federal holidays, the PD would be closed?
Correct.
So they could not get their cars back that same day?
Correct.
It's a bad day.
I have a couple of questions too.
Well, I'd like to comment on that.
We're not commenting, we're asking questions.
Okay.
Let me...
If somebody were cited for driving under the influence on a Saturday or Sunday, they can't come back to the city hall and question it. They're going to have to get themselves out of the county jail. Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions too, and I'm going to actually piggyback on that towing question too. So in terms of parking tickets, so if parking ticket is the enforcement mechanism, so the city doesn't really earn any money out of those? I think it's barely minimal, so it's really the, it's a deterrent?
Correct.
Mechanism?
Correct.
I mean, what do we make out of a $45 ticket? Do we make anything?
We haven't done recent studies, but if you do, were to think about time and motions, by the time the officer arrives and the equipment and vehicle pulls over, gets out of the car, runs the plates, you know, cites the, writes up the ticket and whatnot, you know, hands it out, has whatever the conversation, the city doesn't, it's not a money maker.
Yeah.
And in fact, even on speeding tickets, I think there's a misnomer. Many people think a city can, you know, create budget revenues by doing speeding tickets. The largest portion of a speeding ticket goes to fund the court system. That's by state law in terms of things. And we've done study, and we actually lose money when speeding tickets are issued if an officer must show up at traffic court.
Got it. And then I have a question about the towing thing too. So I mean, I pulled it actually up. I think San Francisco tow's about 42,000 vehicles per year and spends $25 million to operate a towing program, so a little bit more than our budget. But the question I have, and maybe for the city attorney, is there anything in the code, state law or state law today that would, I mean, are we allowed to have a towing violation for something like this? You know, is that permitted? And I literally, I pulled up, so I mean, I don't know what the law is today, but looks like just recently, Assemblymember Chu introduced Assembly Bill 516, which is apparently, the intent is to prevent cities from using towing as a mechanism for any violation that does not serve public safety purposes. But I don't know if there's anything in the laws today. I mean, that looks like it was just introduced, so it's not law today.
Correct. It's the Vehicle Code Section 40203.5A, which allows...
It's 22651.
Oh, sorry.
That I didn't...
It's 22651 in the Vehicle Code Section that allows it, but it has to be done by resolution or ordinance, so we would need to modify our resolution to permit it if we wanted to do it.
So it's an option?
It's an option.
There's a process for it, okay? Then my other question is, so when you're talking about the potential of having two resident permits, two permits, two parking permits per residence, is that typically something, when you issue the permit to that residence, would you put in the license number on those permits so that that would prevent them from being sold or traded or whatnot? Is that typical? What do you issue, I guess, when you give a permit?
The permits that I have looked at online, you know, they come in a lot of varieties, from a lot of information to a little. Most of them that I've seen are done in zones because cities tend to have, you know, permits in different zones. They would be serialized if not license plates. So we would have, you know, a database with a serial number, so we knew who that permit belonged to and which vehicle it was supposed to be on.
Okay. So one way or another?
Yes.
We would know. Okay. And then my other, last question is, one of the options included allowing any Clayton resident to purchase a permit, but I'm wondering, so in the staff report, it did talk about that California Vehicle Code Section 22507 that talks about how you can only do preferential parking privileges to adjacent streets, and I guess there's a case law on it too? So I just, so is that an option or is it not an option?
In my mind, it is not an option, because there is a case that, it was the Hermosa, the city of Hermosa Beach, where they tried to create a preferential parking program near the beach and where they wanted to have the entire city have these permits. And there was an injunction issued because the court found that that was in conflict with the adjacent to requirement.
So we're really looking at then the permit program for those streets only and those residents along those streets?
That is what we would recommend.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Are there any other questions?
I want to point out back then that Mr. Napper said that they don't make, right today, we don't make a lot of money off of traffic citations, speeding citations. I want to remind you, if you look back on your records in the city files back in the 80s, we funded a brand-new police car based upon all citations that were issued.
Mr. Napper?
I would imagine that at that time, most of the speeding ticket monies were retained locally.
It may have been.
And state law has significantly changed. You know that the state of California looks for ways to create additional revenue, and that's one of the ways they have done so over a period of years. They've started funding courts using speeding tickets.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we'll open up a public comment. I do have a number of speaker cards. If anyone else would like to speak, just pass out, fill out a speaker card and pass it to a city clerk. First speaker, Rick Lewis.
I've read over the permit parking program. I find it too complex and a bit too restrictive for homeowners. Two residential permits is definitely not enough for a family with two working parents, three teenage kids, and they all have cars. Two visitors' passes is not enough, and when you list 12 holidays, you only allow us to have parties on four. Now, Dan Walsh over there has four parties per weekend. And it actually gives us less parking than we have now on the street. Now, the other thing I talked about with Jeff was qualify for a permit, you're asking for cars that are registered to the Regency address. I have a company over in Hayward, and I drive a company car, it's registered to my company in Hayward. So by this, by the guidelines of this program, I would not qualify for a residential permit or a visitor's permit. And if you go ahead with the visitor's permit to everyone else in Clayton, they'd be able to park in front of my house on these times, and I would not, nor would my girls, once they come back from college, you wouldn't be able to park either. We should be able to get residential permits based on how many cars we have at our addresses. It should be a little more, not as restrictive. And unlimited guest parking. I think the premise here was the fact that we have a parking problem, and you're putting the solution on us because we have too many parking spots on the street. But the problem is with the hikers. I believe under the current system, the property values will drop even more than they have. If a large family with multiple cars is considering moving in, they're definitely not going to want to live in this area. At least I wouldn't, under the current program. At least, I wouldn't, with, under the current program. Now, the problem is spreading. I don't know if anybody was out there this morning, but in front of my house, all the way at the end of Regency, and as far as up, as I can see towards the other end of Regency, there was no parking. It may have been because there's, you know, rain coming for the next four or five days. I don't know. But the problem is definitely spreading to the weekdays, and so if we don't get a handle on this on the weekends, you know, it's going to spread to the weekdays. Hopefully, we can go back and, I think we have a good groundwork. We can go back and look at the program, maybe loosen it up a little bit for those families that have multiple cars.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Hunt.
John Hunt, 115 Regency. We've been homeowners for about 23 years now, and there's always been hikers, and there's, it's always been a great street to live on. I know tonight's not the time to come in and talk about the inconvenience that's already been talked about. I must say, I was taken about, back one afternoon, I had a garbage can out with a "Please No Parking" sign on it, and I saw the gentleman removing it, and I went out and I said, "Hey, the reason I have that 'No Parking' sign there is because my mom's about to come." And she's 91 years old, and she walks with a walker. And he said, "It's a public street." And he started to move, just moved, "And I'm going to park here." And I said, "Really?" And I said, "You're going to do that?" And his wife said, "No, let's go." And he looked at me and he said, "Remember that last fire?" I said, "Oh, yeah." He said, "On the next fire, I hope your house burns down." And they've been hiking on Mount Diablo for as long as I've lived there. It's always been pleasurable. We've offered water. I've talked to people, but for some reason, I don't know why it is, but over the last few years, it's changed. It's absolutely changed. The attitudes of the hikers, the, they treat it like a parking lot. We try to come home. If they're in the street after a hike, they look at you like, they're not going to get out of the way. And you're like, "I got to get in my driveway." I've had litter on the front yard from the hikers. I've had, on the muddy days, they clean their boots, et cetera, on the bricks, on the sidewalk right there, so I take a hose and clean it off. But it's okay, but that's, you've heard all that. I have a concern, because we have a large family in the area. I have a brother that lives in the city, brothers in the area, my mom, our family. We have large parties with family. If, if we can easily bring 20 to 40 people into our home, and oftentimes on weekends, oftentimes on holidays, how am I going to cover those people? How am I going to cover my family? Are they going to get towed? Are they going to get a ticket for coming to a birthday party? That's not fair. It's not fair. I hope we can find a solution, and I agree. A problem that's come onto our street, we're the solution. I don't think that's fair. We've lived there. We're the ones that are now going to be paying $100 plus a year to allow people to park, our friends and family, to park in front of our street. Something else has got to come up. Something else has to be found out. And that's all. Okay, that's about it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Ron Sarudi.
I live at 20 Rialto Drive, and I just want to bring to your attention that the problem was initially more of a, or the major part of the problem is Regency Drive, but people are now finding Rialto Drive and the gate at the end of Rialto Drive. And over the past few weeks, the amount of traffic on Rialto Drive has, has increased. What I would like to see is, we're okay with parking permits. I think that the number of permits maybe is a little bit light, so I think we'd like to see you reevaluate that, based on, I mean, similar to what this last gentleman had to But what we've noticed more and more are the folks that, the folks that are hiking are, how should I put it? I mean, they're getting to be more rude than ever before. Couple of my neighbors who are at the, at the very end of Regency, or Rialto Drive, are picking up garbage all the time. One of them got in an altercation with a hiker who had two dogs, and they're not supposed to be hiking in the park anyway, but he let his dogs loose, and, you know, they ran all over the guy's yard, and when he politely asked him to, you know, get his dogs off of the property, the hiker chewed him out. So that type of, that type of behavior, the cleaning of the boots, I've seen that, and the garbage are really issues that I think should really be addressed. And I hope, you know, one of the things I'd like to see is, you know, the police department making more of a presence. Now, I did see last weekend, patrol car came up here a couple of times, up on our street, and that means they also patrol Regency Drive as well. So I really appreciate that. But there are these, these, these problems of garbage and just, just hiker behavior that I think should at least be, you know, looked at. I'm one who moved to Rialto Drive because I like the outdoors. I moved there specifically because we're close to the mountain. And so, you know, I don't want to penalize people. People should be able to hike, but there, you know, there does need to be some kind of limitation in policing some of their behavior, because it is getting worse. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Montijo.
Thank you very much. I'm Mark Montijo. I live at 127 Regency Drive, about five houses down from the Regency gate. We've been there for about 10 years, and it has gotten a lot worse, and you've heard all those stories before. Most of the cars on Regency, if, I have the original driveway, and my driveway only holds one car. And some people have expanded their cars to hold two, their driveways to hold two cars, but that's about it. So I get one in the garage, one behind the one in the garage, in the driveway, and we have three, my wife and I live there, and we live with our three daughters, one of whom, one of whom's away at college right now. She'll be back in the summertime. So the two-car minimum for residents, per resident is going to create a hardship for us, and I would respectfully ask you, request that you reconsider that. And also, the guest permits, maybe increase that, too. The houses, most of the houses there have four bedrooms, so two, two parking permits per house doesn't, doesn't make sense, especially to someone new moving in. I assume they're buying a four-bedroom house because they have a family. So that's it. It's just been difficult for us, and I appreciate you all considering this pilot program. Every weekend, my family prepares for what we call another episode of Car Wars, and so it's been quite a bit, quite a bit of difficulty, and it does seem like the hikers are getting more aggressive and rude. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Next speaker is Ray Grumman. Grumman, sorry.
I'm Ray Grumman. I live at 79 Regency Drive, and I've lived there for 35 years. And one of the aspects of this program is that I have four cars. I have adult children, so I need, I feel that the two is inadequate. The two isn't an adequate amount for myself, my children, and any children I have with cars that come to visit me. The, one other concern I have is the signage. There was something, you needed 80 signs, was, was one of the figures for this. I mean, we're going to have sort of lollipops every 10, 15 yards. Isn't there a better way that we can do this, like have a big sign at the beginning of Regency saying, "No, north side of something, resident parking only." So it's there, and it acts as a deterrent, so if somebody drives in Regency and sees it, and says, "Oh, I can't park here. I got to find somewhere else," rather than have, I mean, I don't know how you plan to do this, to have sort of signs on posts or signs on the lampposts. But I know my frontage for my house is well over 100 feet, and so does that mean I'm going to have two or maybe three signs in front of my house? So that was another consideration, or something I'd like the, the city to think about as far as obtrusive signage. And the whole point, I think, with the parking, with the statistics they have, with the number of spaces, the number of houses, you know, the problem's not my neighbors. This is not whether my neighbor parks in front of my house, or whether my neighbor has a party and has 20 cars there. It's to do with the hikers and the out-of-towners. So, you know, really want somewhere where we can easily get the permits, if we have to share them, we can share them. It would, no, I think between the residents, we can make this work, but, you know, enforcing too many restrictions on what we can do and what we can't do is going to be, I think, a disadvantage to us, and not really how we want it or how it was, you know, 35 years ago. So thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Next. Next speaker, Margaret Iraclio.
I'm Margaret Iraclio at 151 Regency Drive. First, I'd like to thank the council, especially Jeff Wan, for taking up this matter. I'd like to set the record straight. I resent the term "preferential" when speaking of the parking permit program. The residents of Regency Drive are not elitist. They don't think they're preferred. They just want what everybody else in Clayton has. The plan submitted states we need to pay an annual fee for a permit per vehicle, limited to two, to park in front of our homes. There should not be an annual fee. If anything, it should be a one-time nominal fee. After the initial phase, the only office work needed would be if a resident lost their permit or a new resident moved in. We should also not be confined to only two visitor parking passes. We should be able to get as many passes as we need. There could be a photocopy of an original, telling us that we would need to go to City Hall to get additional passes in order to have a party. Sounds like a punishment from parent. I've heard city council members state that they know what we're going through, since they live near a school and have the same problems we do. I've driven past their homes at different times during the day, and never once have I seen a vehicle parked in front of their homes. So unless you have four cars parked in front of your home at 8:00 AM for two, three, or more hours, and have cars waiting for those cars to leave, so they can park for another two, three, or more hours, every Saturday, Sunday, and sometimes weekdays, like yesterday and today, then I'm sorry, but you don't have any idea what we're going through. If you'd like to see for yourselves, come on down, but make sure you walk over, as you won't be able to park. Clayton is a small town at the base of Mount Diablo State Park. That would be the whole town, not just Regency Drive. There are many other streets with easy access to the trails, some of which have an easier entrance than the treacherous hill in Regency. The hikers are coming to Regency because of the easy directions on the social media apps. Take Ignacio, make a right on Clayton Road, and another right on Regency. Why should the Regency residents be the only ones to have the pleasure of having hikers parked in front of our homes consistently? Let's spread the walk around. Our parking situation has been going up for years, and has only gotten worse due to the inaction of our city council. They didn't personally have to deal with it, as it wasn't happening in their neighborhood, so it was pushed aside. Now it feels like we're being penalized for requesting quality of life to be restored. Telling us that we have to pay annually for a permit to park on our street, and that we will be allowed two visitor passes, doesn't sound like we're being treated preferentially. It sounds more like we're the only ones who are not being treated preferentially. It appears to me that some of the city council members care more about the people from out-of-town, out of state, and out of country being able to park on Regency than they do about the people who actually live on Clayton, on Regency. As the Clayton motto goes, I'm asking you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Judy Hunt.
I'm reading this for Judy Hunt, my neighbor, 145 Regency Drive. I am an original owner and agree with all points addressed by Jeff Weiner, which you'll hear later. We do not need annual passes. The larger number of hikers that come here are infringing on my quality of life. Living here for the past 40 years, I personally know why this now is an issue. Visitor parking is not too much to ask for, as anyone else who lives in Clayton does not have this problem. I feel this infringes our rights and freedom as a Clayton citizen. In closing, I want to express that we are the residents, we, the residents of Regency Drive, are not asking for any such special treatment, just the quality of life like all that live in this wonderful, peaceful area of Clayton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Teri Denslow.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. So when I was a part of the, the subcommittee with Councilmember Wan and Wolf, I said over and over, there's a lot of options that I could live with. There's a couple, there's four things, four concerns that I wanted to raise, and four suggestions that I have for your consideration. I'm concerned with the recommended proposal for the following reasons. The first one, first reason, $60,000 for signage is really expensive, and I feel like there's a high likelihood that the traffic congestion will move to other streets, and I question whether we're going to chase Mount Terre, Mount Terre and Duncan intersection, blocking circle, West Myrick, Molina, and other streets deeper in the neighborhood at 60K a pop. I've previously heard Mr. Napper talk about funding concerns that we have in the city, challenges that we have with having lower police salaries, and what I think I've heard him say before, if we're going to chase after all of these different neighborhoods, we're talking about the salary of four to five police officers, and I'm questioning whether that's the best use of our limited funds. Number two, implemented as designed, I know there's the option here to consider, to consider to make it more broad. It seems like this would block, block access to Donner Canyon Trailheads for outside parties. I have a lot of concerns with that, because the park belongs to the state of California. The streets are public streets that are paid for by Clayton taxpayers, and I question if we're creating a members-only access, and whether this is the right thing to do for Clayton and its, and its visitors. The third concern that I have is, I'm concerned whether this is going to create division down the road amongst other Clayton residents. Okay? So we talked about Mount Terre, and Mount Terre had a lot of people on the, you know, on the street this weekend. I'm concerned that if we put this in place, the way it's designed, and we ask other communities to pay $2,500 for their consideration, is this going to set neighbors against each other, or potentially them coming back to you, saying that you've targeted, short-sighted, you've set preferential? And I think you guys are trying to do the right thing, and I'm concerned that there's potential unintended consequences. My fourth concern, in reading through this, I didn't see anything that, where we defined a criteria of how do we know if this is working? So when we do the pilot program, is it, yes, if people are less angry? Is it no, how, what does good look like? I didn't see that really defined. So a couple of thoughts that I had before heading down the fiscal commitment, are there some other things that could we reconvene as a subcommittee? Look at working with the folks on the AllTrails. AllTrails app is what's bringing in the hikers that you guys don't like. Okay? And, and there's a new map that is saying that it's, that that's the start of it. I know this. I'm a volunteer. I talked to the hikers. We can change, I worked with them this weekend to try and change it. Working closer with the volunteers, I was out there picking up trash as a volunteer this weekend. Working with Mount Diablo to talk about building a parking lot, potentially, longer term, I know that's a big deal. And then other ideas that the committee might come up with to brainstorm.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thanks.
Next speaker, Beth Walsh.
I'd like to make two statements. One is on behalf of my neighbor, Sue Lloyd, at 158 Regency Drive. She has reviewed the parking lot proposal and feels the cost and restrictions are punitive to the homeowners. She does not agree with the proposal as written. She also feels the permit plan as written will have a negative impact on home values. The situation on Regency is really a very unique one, that you don't find in many other cities. We have lost the ability to make normal residential use of our neighborhood streets. It's just not there. I'm in the opinion currently that the proposal, the way it is, penalizes us for circumstances that are beyond our control, and actually worsens the circumstances. It doesn't meet... It doesn't meet the definition of normal residential use. Is 100 spots for potential hikers enough on a street that, how many spots are available for parking on street?
Can you please address your comments to us? We'll pick up later.
I'm asking for clarification. Currently on Regency, how many cars could actually park on the street?
We'll come back to that. Please just finish your comments first.
It's pretty germane to what we're talking about. Because we're talking, if half of our street is allotted for other people, great, I'm for it. But we have to be able to have a normal life, just like you do. If you wanted to have Easter brunch and have your family, could your family park close to your house to accommodate that with two permits? I don't have 12 spots in my driveway to have my friends park. As such, I would request a postponement of the vote in order for the, us to, as residents, to further discuss what impact this is going to have, whether it's going to be positive or negative.
Great. Thank you. Next speaker, Daniel Walsh.
Another warrior game gone, but I think they won this time. I'm speaking in regards for Jeff, Jeff Weiner. So if this comes off sounding like a New Yorker, you know why. Mayor and Vice Mayor and council folks, when we started this petition May 2018, it was to get the city's help in removing a merit of safety and quality of life and pollution, noise, speeding, and bad behavior caused by our area becoming a free parking lot for hikers at Mount Diablo. Some people, including Ms. Pierce, posted online about that problem. If it was not stopped, it would probably result in a permit parking. That and other postings have not made an iota of change. This year, it's worse than ever. Well, the time has come that the city put together a proposal that has stimulated our thought process and raised some questions. We are not happy in that this is limiting us to two cars and two visitors. That's worse than what we have right now when the hikers are not here. We feel we should have the same opportunity to utilize parking and visitor parking as now without the hikers. No one has guaranteed spots, but only neighbors can park here, and it's never been an issue if people having a party of more than two cars. With your proposal, we're going backwards by limiting us when that is not what's happening now, when the hikers are not taking our parking spots. On rainy days or on 110-degree days when no one's out hiking, we still would not be able to use those parking spots that are unused on the streets. We're not looking for guaranteed spots anymore than we have now on non-hiker days. We have more street spots than cars, unlike apartment areas where residents and cars outnumber spaces. In other areas of concern, the cost seems to be very high compared to Walnut Creek, which is at $20 each car. We're not pleased that we're expected to pay for signs and yearly renewals. Some do not want to pay at all, but want, but to pay $130 for only two cars each year seems excessive. This idea of special events makes no sense since that does not guarantee spots anymore than just normal parties today. If we cannot park in our block, why should, why should the empty spots be required? I've heard what, I heard that when Oakhurst requested speed bumps and signage, the city paid for those, and it was to protect the well-being of those residents. Our issues are the same importance. The signs were changed at the elementary school as well for better traffic flow, and the city paid for those as well. We think the plan has merits and was prepared, taking our concerns seriously. We'd like more discussion and more time to come up with a revision that is fair, not punitive on us. Can we delay the vote and have more discussions to work out these issues and hear each other's concerns and not develop a plan that's over-engineered and too costly that doesn't achieve the desired goals? Thank you, Jeff and Shirley Weiner.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And then I have one more speaker, one more speaker card for Kathy Burge, I think. I'm sure I didn't pronounce that right.
My name is Kathy Benj. I live on 139 Regency Drive, and I am involved in this whole thing from the beginning, and I agree with all the residents that have spoken what the problem is, and I know that we're trying to resolve it, but I really don't think this parking permit program is going to be something that's workable as far as the cost and limitations is. Here we are trying to keep some of the outside guests coming in, and yet with this permit, I feel that we're putting restrictions and costs on ourselves, and it's a penalty, and we live here. And that's the part that upsets me, and I feel that maybe we could have a little bit more time, we could work out something else, or like we have suggested before about the gate, even though there is a cost, I think with us as homeowners, between the two, we would probably, would like to help with the cost of the gate and work with that. It'd be a better objection, you know? So I would like to have, you know, continue on this and a little bit more time to think about what we want to do. I really don't like this parking permit situation. Thank you.
Thank you. So I don't have any other speaker cards, but if anyone else would like to speak that hasn't spoken yet, Ms. Stanaway.
Ann Stanaway, again. Okay, so we're thinking about putting in another ordinance. Well, where's the enforcement of our existing ordinances? I don't know. I agree with the contention that the homeowners have that they're experiencing a decrease in quality of life in those areas. However, when I moved into my place, I knew that I wouldn't be able to have three teenage daughters with cars and be able to have them parked near me or even in the same subdivision as me. And it isn't because I live in a multifamily complex. No, I don't. I live in a single-family home. Understand, when you move next to, in close proximity to, a state recreational facility, you are going to have the great unwashed American public trotting around on your doorstep. That's all there is to it. And as it becomes more fashionable to be quote-unquote physically fit, these individuals who like to present themselves as fit go on these nature walks. Well, fine, but they are, people are not necessarily as considerate of other individuals as they should be or could be. And that's just the reality of the situation, and unfortunately, we, when you live next to a public facility, a state facility, a federal facility, you encounter the world, and that's all there is to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Yeah. So, what I was going to say is, we really didn't receive the proposal until the 15th, and it really didn't give us sufficient time for us as residential people to sit down to discuss this with each other, to determine what the best course of action is and what we would be able to do. So we're kind of, we're requesting if possible, if you guys, if there's a chance that we can borrow Endeavor Hall or even a nominal fee so we can get together as a group and ask you guys to postpone any vote until next month, so that we can come back and talk with you guys and maybe all be on the same page and work through this. Thank you.
Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Who would like to start? Vice Mayor Pierce.
Yeah, I'd like to actually ask a question because I think I've heard several of the folks mention that they would like to have more time to consider how this would work and how it would impact them and if they can come up with any other solutions. I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think Endeavor Hall specifically is being used for a theatrical production right now, so it probably is not available, but this room might be for a meeting to be able to get a larger group together than perhaps fit in somebody's living room. So we can think about that, but I just wanted to verify that we might be able to do that if we were to postpone it, a decision. I do have a couple of questions that were raised, and just to clarify what was in the staff report, and I understand it's been a really busy weekend for a lot of people because the weather was gorgeous, and you may not have spent all that beautiful time inside reading a staff report. You're probably out enjoying your own yard or maybe even going up on the mountain yourselves. And that's a really great way to spend the weekend. But I think the staff report suggests putting the signage approximately 100 feet apart. Is that a state statute for notification on parking restrictions?
I'm going to have the city engineer answer that question.
Yeah, I just know that around bart stations and things like that, there's a frequency of signage, and I think that might be in the vehicle code to make sure everybody knows what the rules are.
Yes, Vice Mayor, the, that's just a recommendation that comes out of the sign code. It is not a mandated distance.
But it comes out of the sign code as a way to make sure people are properly notified of specific locations?
Yes, and it actually gives a range of distances. So just for sake of, you know, picking an average, we, or I picked, I said, okay, about 100 feet would probably be adequate to give people adequate notice, but not have so many signs that they become a nuisance in the neighborhood.
Right, because I've noticed some places, they say no parking between signs, and they put an arrow pointing toward the other sign. Because of the hill, I don't know if that would be practical. You might have to have some in-between, but maybe it doesn't need to be one per lot on those wide lots.
Our intent was to put, you know, one at the beginning that says, begin permit parking, and then sequentially after that. And typically, we would put it at a property line so it doesn't impede onto, or encroach onto, anyone's particular parcel or lot. And it's not going to be, you know, every 100 feet is a cookie cutter. You guys are going to have to work around items that are already there, fire hydrants and other public improvements. So it's going to be very customized of where we will put them, to where they're appropriate and adequate, but not, don't become a nuisance themselves.
Not smack dab in some, in front of somebody's living room window.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, that was a question I had, because I wasn't sure whether it was prescribed as a certain distance or not, and maybe we need to absolutely verify what the vehicle code says for that as well. But if it's a range and we can be careful and considerate about where those would go, I think that would be a good idea. I do think they probably need to be more frequent than at the one end and the other because of the terrain of that street. People are going to find an easy way to say they didn't see it. So you're going to have to make them frequently enough and that sort of thing. I think beginning vehicle or permit parking is a good idea for those areas where it would be allowed. That's all my questions. I really do have some concerns about some of these things. I'm not convinced the permit parking program is going to solve the problem at all. But on the other hand, I wouldn't want to be living with that traffic either. I live with it for several hours during the day because of the elementary school, but it's short-term. It comes and goes relatively quickly most of the time. Now, on weekends, the playfields get a lot of use, and we get a lot of parking in my street as well, so I do sympathize there. I get it. I also get the idea that having two very well-grown children by now and grandchildren on the way who are going to want their own cars, I understand you're going to want some extra space. I do think we have to count for most of the lots, that most of the lots have at least two spaces. I guess there are a few of the original houses that only had a single wide driveway, but I think most of them have at least two spaces in their driveway. I understand a lot of garages are full of stuff, not cars. I get that. But I also get that maybe having just two on-street parking permits in addition to the two spaces, or maybe three in the driveway, that gets up to five, four to five per household, and then you add a couple more guest permits that can be used for visitors, that's up to as many as six. I don't think there are very many neighborhoods in this city that allow or have six parking spaces associated with them when you add both the driveway and the street. So I'm struggling a little with whether you permit every car in the household with an on-the-street parking permit in addition to whatever the driveway capacity is. I think that kind of pushes the boundaries a little, and then you add guest permits to that. I mean, if you've got mom and dad and three kids that all have cars, that's five permits to park on the street, and then you add two guest permits, that's seven, plus two to three in the driveway, that's up to 10 spaces for a single house. If you have 100-foot frontage, minus your driveway, you can probably only get three to four cars in front of your house anyway. Pretty soon, it's filling up the street with folks not using their driveway. I'm not even counting, you notice, I'm not even counting the garages right now. I'm assuming those are full of stuff. And so I'm struggling with this, and I'm not sure we've got the right answer yet. I'm sympathetic, so I want to find a solution. I also am totally understanding that the behavior of some of these people is not wonderful. I will tell you that the behavior of some of the parents of the children and some of the children that go to school is not really wonderful either. So I experience that on a daily basis at my house. So I'm struggling to try and find an answer. I made notes and I put some stars, and now I have to read my own writing. I do wonder, I think for the pilot program, it makes sense that we're defining this as an annual permit, but I'm wondering if people don't move or they don't have changes, do they need to go through the whole permitting process every year? I don't know if that is necessary or if it could be just an online renewal and say, yes, everything's the same. If somebody else moves in, then their license plate's not going to match the permit, so they're going to have to re-register. I don't know. These are questions that come to me based on the concerns I have heard here, and yet I don't want Clayton to become, or this area to become known as an elitist area. I do think there's going to be a trickle-out effect, particularly if we go with option one, which is virtually all of Regency Drive and all of Rialto, except for a very few spaces relatively, that don't have homes on facing the street. I do think it'll slop over into Mount Terre Parkway, it'll go onto Weatherly Drive, it'll certainly go down onto El Molino, and I just don't know how far out we can go without creating a real imbalance and inaccessibility for the rest of the city to what's in our backyard. So I'm struggling with some of these questions. I don't think I have all the answers. I don't think I personally have a solution right now that I can feel, I can support one way or the other. one way or the other. I like the idea initially of option one, which protects all of Regency and all of Rialto, except for whether or not houses facing on it, but I think that's going to push it off into the adjacent neighborhoods. On the other hand, I think it's going to go there anyway, and those areas are going to become clobbered immediately. So I'm thinking maybe the neighbors need to sit down and talk again and see, you know, think through all of these different scenarios and how it actually works. I know that when we, for another use for garage sales, we say, because of the traffic created by them, we say you can only do that, I think it's four times a year, might be six, I don't remember off the top of my head. I think it's four. I think we thought one per season, sort of, or something like that, just out of respect for the neighbors because of the traffic. And so, you know, the 10 permits for a party, hopefully people will carpool. But I think you're precluding other people's use if you get too many on-street permits. I don't have an answer right now. I need to be persuaded by somebody that we've got a clear-cut path, and I don't think we do.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf.
I tend to agree with you with the work that we did on the ad hoc committee. It seems at this point that there were more questions raised now than when we actually sat with the residents earlier during our deliberations with them. Certainly, looking at these two options, for me personally, option two gives the area below Rialto, whatever that is down there, I don't know the exact name of the streets, but it seems to me that that's, would be the first opportunity for people to move down and park rather than going across to Mount Air Parkway. That may not turn out to be the case, I don't know. But it seems to me that, judging by the people that were here today, that we have no choice but to sit down and talk with them again. The one thing that, there are a couple of things. First of all, this is never going to be a free program. We're going to have to find some way to make this somewhat revenue-neutral. I like your idea of possibly keeping the renewal of the permit, just one time you pay for your permit and then get it renewed if nothing's changed. But this is never going to be a free program. I can't see that happening. With regard to whether ticketing or towing, I think once we get into the meat of that, we'll find out what will actually work and deter people from parking there. I want to give some relief to the people that live in that area, without being excessive, but I do want to give them some relief, and I feel for them. I think that they should also understand, you should also understand that when this gets going, if we're to postpone and postpone and talk and talk and talk, you are not going to get any relief in 2019. So you have to realize that. Because we're already talking about, from this day, if we started today, it'd be somewhere around, between 90 and 120 days before anything could even get started. So you're going to be putting up with this for the rest of this year. That bothers me, but if it doesn't bother you, I'm willing to talk. And that's why I joined Councilman Juan on the ad hoc committee, because we feel like the city should be listening to you, but we have to come to some kind of compromise that will benefit the vast majority of the residents. I don't think we're ever going to have a 100% vote on what's right and what's wrong. But certainly giving you some relief is where my head is at. And at this time, judging by the conversations we've had today, I can't see how we could possibly vote on anything. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Juan.
I don't know if I would make that conclusion just yet, but that could be where we end up. I've spoken to many residents at length on the matter. I don't think any of us take this lightly. And given its new ground for the city, I think it's especially important to tread carefully. So I do want to focus on the idea that this, what we're discussing right now is a pilot. We have the ability to move forward, and if we do that, we would gain additional information. We'd find out over time if it's effective, and we can make changes either during the pilot program as needed or towards the end, based on the analysis of the data that we were able to glean. This proposal as a pilot is in effect only on weekends, holidays, and it's only from eight to five. Nothing restricts evening gatherings on the weekends or get-togethers at any other time during the week. Overall, for me as well, I would like the least intrusive way to accomplish the goals of the program. And those goals are to alleviate that surge parking that occurs in front of people's houses, effectively crowding out all other available parking. Spillover is a big concern, how it pushes out into other areas. I think having 200-plus cars, give or take, on those isolated areas, on just the Regency and Rialto areas, that, I mean, clearly that's a problem. But, you know, depending on how it pans out, 200-plus cars distributed over a much larger area, depending on the density, is a less severe problem. I don't think it's ideal to have a surge of visitor parking from all, from all over the place, but you never notice one or two cars here or there, it's just when it is concentrated in one specific area. So a permit parking, permit parking program, we know for a fact that that will alleviate the parking issue in the permit areas during those times. So to me, that's a given, that's where we start from. We know that will address the situation. The main issue is mitigating any negative downstream impacts that may occur. I've talked to Mr. Weiner at length and others as well, and Mr. Weiner is being held out as a representative of the group. And so, and while Mr. Walsh, he stated that on Mr. Weiner's behalf, that he would request more time. What we discussed, he and I, if we were able to make various modifications, I'm confident that the group would be amiable to that. So just a few things that I think that we should consider when we're talking about the plan. I do want to thank Chief Warren and Mr. Allman for doing the vast majority of the legwork in drafting the proposal. I think it is very consistent with what we had suggested, so that, and especially turning it around very quickly, so thank you for that. So just a couple random things, I was taking notes while people were talking. As Councilmember Wolf indicates, it's not, one of the main goals is to be cost-neutral to the city. And I think recovering that cost over a lengthy period of time is both fair to the program as well as not asking other residents to subsidize the program. I do think that as we, as the city does recover the cost, we can sunset those costs and change the fee structure so that it doesn't become a perpetual revenue generator for the city. I don't have any interest in generating revenue for the city for this. I appreciate Mr. Lewis's comment about work vehicles. I think that having resident permits equal to the number of vehicles that are registered to the owners at the property is reasonable. I understand the genesis for having the limit of two, and that's based on, you know, the number of available parking spaces versus the number of houses and how many you could fit in if those were all allocated evenly. But I don't think that the issue, from consistently what I hear from the residents, is that the issue is not competing among themselves, it's the visitor parking. And so, no, I don't believe any neighbor, well, I don't believe the majority of the neighbors will have an issue within their own circle of residents. And so, if we're able to adjust the program to say the resident permit should be equal to the number of vehicles registered to the owners, that, to me, takes care of the vast majority of the disagreement that we've heard voiced. And then the other thing is the visitor permits. One of the goals of the, or one of the problems that we're trying to alleviate is to allow residents to use their property in a fairly normal manner, to have parties or get-togethers. Some people have a lot more friends than I do, and they can, they can have many people over at their house, and that's, and that's great. And like I said, I don't think that the residents have a problem with their neighbors having parties. That seems like a fairly normal activity. And so, if we're able to increase the number of visitor permit, or visitor passes available, I think that probably takes care of the other major hurdle that the residents have. You know, we can, we can, there's probably a number of ways we can do it. We could just say, you get as many guest passes as you want, knowing that for the vast majority of times, they're not going to be used. We could chain them to the individual resident parking site, because right now, the way it's stated, it says, if you have a resident parking permit, then you get two guest passes. I mean, you can make that, if you have one, you get four. If you register a second, you get another four. I mean, you could do something like that. And there are ways to increase the number, and I don't think that really causes a problem. Again, the rationale for limiting, as Chief Warren mentioned, was because we're doing the math on the available spaces versus the number of houses. But that assumes that the number, or the utilization is fairly constant, and really, the utilization is going to be spike utilization, and it's not all going to happen at once. And to the extent that even if it did happen all at once, you still have, what we talked about, you still have driveway parking, you still have the available parking that's outside the permit area. And even if that's still a problem, you are no worse off than you are today. You're actually much better off. So when you compare the alternatives of the status quo, which is nothing, versus this program with these tweaks that I've talked about, which gets you almost, in my view, almost all the way there, to me, that provides that immediate relief, and it gives us an opportunity to get the data that we need to really evaluate if it's effective. Initially, I had thought to make permits available to all Clayton residents, that was included in the staff report, so that's really great. In looking at the number of available parking that would be outside the permit zone, I think, I have a spreadsheet here that looks at it, you know, for option two, which Councilmember Wolf mentioned, which I like, you know, you still have close to 60 spaces that are outside the permit area that are just going to be a free-for-all all the time. That seems like, that seems reasonable enough that we are not being exclusive to other people that want to use it. And so, so I'm okay with not having that, I forget what item number it was on the option, but that, to me, is fine. And then, the, one of the questions that I think Ms. Denzil raised was how do we define success? To me, I see success as parking from hikers and people that aren't residents in the neighborhood in front of people's houses is dramatically reduced. That, to me, is success. If we see that, we know it's working. I would like to track the data on things like citations issued, on, I don't know, physical fights going on, and all that other stuff that may be relevant for us to say, hey, is this program working as we intended? Is it working better or worse, and what other changes that we can make to affect that change? I did have one question about the nature of citation. Is, is there a difference between issuing a citation under the vehicle code or versus just a municipal violation on whether, on the traffic of money and how it goes? Does the money flow differently depending on where we issue the citation under? I don't know if that, I don't know if that's a thing. Okay. Because I, I guess my thought-
I'm sorry, Mala, I could not hear your answer at all. The mic takes a second or two to warm up, so.
I was just saying that we'd have to look into that. We don't have the answer right now.
Okay.
Yeah, and my thought process on that was that, as, you know, Ms. Harper described, we get very little after the citations on the vehicle code, but if it's a municipal fine or violation, it could be, we could change the flow of the money. It's not really material to the decision-making process, because I don't think that we're trying to generate money. But it's just something to think about. So overall, I do, you know, when I talk to the residents, they say, hey, two resident permits is too few, and two guest passes is too few. But if you allow us to park our vehicles at when we live there, and if I can have the party that I want to without having to do some kind of weird juggling, then this is great. It gets us all the way there. And so, you know, I would say those things are not, those things are not off the table here, and we can make those changes. So in that regard, I think that would get us to where we want to be. I spoke with Mr. Weiner, you know, an hour before this meeting, and I asked him, what is the minimum that your group would accept? And, you know, he has been really active, obviously, in talking with the residents, and he's, you know, polling them, asking them, what do we need? And to me, and for him, with those types of things, it gets us there. And, you know, we can go back and we could talk about it more, but I do think that we've covered most of the ground. And the, essentially, the longer we delay, then one of three things could happen. We can get nothing, and that's it, you're done. You can get more information and make changes as, you know, it could be perfect, and you get exactly what you want at some point later in the future. Or we could essentially get what we have on the table now. And given that this is a pilot, given that we have the ability to make changes over time, it, to me, a burden-hand kind of makes more sense. So that's where I'm at. And I do think if we're able to increase the number of resident passes, increase the number of guest passes, we get you all the way there.
Okay.
So the one, the one thing that I heard a great deal about, and is a united voice coming out of this group, that this was too expensive, that they're being penalized in some way. And again, I have to go back to the idea that no matter what we do, it can't be a free program. We have very limited resources in Clayton, and in some way, they're going to have to pay for this program. That's the one concern. I understand, Councilman Juan, about getting them there, and I agree with you that having something is better than having nothing. Certainly, we can, like we always say, until we know, we don't know. But what is, what is the cost of the program acceptable to the residents?
I did have an extensive conversation about the cost, and, you know, I was very frank. It's going to cost money. So you have to be okay with that. If you're not okay with costing money, we're done. So I think the money is an issue, but it's not a deal-breaker. It's an issue that's, you know, disagreeable, but I think if we are able to get to the place where we're not limiting on passes, then the only limitation is the dollars. It's not like actually affecting the way you live. So in that regard, and plus, given that it's a pilot, we say that, you know, the fees cover the pilot, and then after the pilot, we evaluate, what does it really cost us? We don't know, because we haven't done it. So we get that information, we find out, and even to the extent that we need to recover whatever the fees are, we recover the fees and then we sunset the fees. I mean, to me, you know, that, we, it's like rent-to-own, you know?
Okay, let me go to Councilmember Diaz. You haven't had a chance to talk yet.
Just a comment or two. I don't think this ordinance or whatever the proposed parking permit is ready for a final vote. I think we need to have further dialogue with the residents and fine-tune this thing, because right now, it is so blasted restrictive and complicated, it doesn't need to be that way. And I want it to be less restrictive upon the residents over there. And I do believe, I keep harping on this, increased enforcement would be a way to immediately resolve some of these issues while we further dialogue. And I would also encourage our esteemed city attorney to go back and tap that brain trust at BB and K. trust at BB and K that we send a healthy stipend to each month and do further research and find out some way to come up with a way to do all the things we need to do within the limits of the law. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Sorry. Am I dominating too much? I'm sorry. I just, there was a, Kathy brought up something about the gate and that's, I didn't really understand what that was all about.
Do you want to bring her back up to clarify that?
Would you mind, Kathy? Would you mind just stepping up? I, I'm sorry, but I didn't understand what it is that you were talking about, the gate. Are you talking about closing the gate or change? I didn't get that part.
A few meetings ago, different options were brought up trying to resolve the problem. And I know that there's some issue about closing the entrance there and that kind of went down the drain. But weighing out the costs on the permit and all the details that's involved and a lot of people are not really in favor of it. If we have to, I really don't want to, but like you said, nothing is free. If we would have to share costs and get a gate, Jane said, this is not an entrance to the park and detour that, and that's all everything, you know, and post signs ahead, you know, coming into Regency. So in a way, it's real simple. It's just the cost of having the, the gate or the little, it doesn't have to be a wall, that's $3 million, but something like that I think would be more feasible and that's something we need to talk about further.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. That's all.
So let me make a couple of comments as well. So in terms of the numbers, so I mean, I, I do think that there's a limitation in a sense that there are only so many on-street parking spaces and only so many homes. So I don't know that we can, I don't know that we could allow for more, especially not more than, no more permanent parking spaces than there are actual parking spaces on the street. So I'm a little bit concerned as to how we would do that. And I think then, then we potentially put the neighbors in a situation where some neighbor might not be able to get those permanent spaces. So, and I get it, not everybody will use them, not everybody will obtain them. But then we do also, we're also talking about having those guest parking spaces, which would do that. So anyway, I'm concerned about just granting more permits potentially than we actually have on-street parking spaces. So if I'm looking at, for example, option two, I think our city staff surveyed that there are, there are 75 on Regency and 30 on Rialto. So that's 105 spaces and I think there are about 50 homes within that same range. So it does, the math sort of leads to that, two per residence. Do you want to make also another point on the, so when we talk about having the numbers, when we talk about two per residence and then the guest parking spaces, we also need to factor in that every house is supposed to have four other spaces. And I get it, people use their garage spaces for other, other purposes for storage, so not everybody has those available, but everybody should have at least those two driveway spaces. So I think we need to at least keep, remind ourselves that that's there. And I know, you know, in terms of our, our code regulations, I think not only today, but also in the 60s and 70s, all of our single-family homes are required to be built with two plus two, with four parking spaces. So if some residence doesn't have those four parking spaces, then that's a, something happened there, but they're supposed to have, I think, four spaces. So anyway, that's, that's my thoughts on numbers. And just a general note about, you know, every neighborhood in this city is a little bit different. You know, there are some neighborhoods like Westwood that don't have any street parking at all. So they really just rely on their, their four spaces on their property and then there are a few guest spaces. And then there are plenty of other streets where you don't have a lot of on-street parking spaces at all. Like in my home, I got, I got plenty of parking in my driveway and my garage, but I don't have any parking spaces directly in front of my, my house. Obviously, I don't have the park right next to me either, so I don't have the same issue. So I, I get it. In terms of the cost, I mean, one way or another, we have to pay for the program. I mean, I get it that we're definitely not trying, this is not a revenue generating effort by any means. That's not the intent. And I think if the city is, I think I heard that the city would be paying for the signage. So that's already is the city subsidizing, subsidizing it to some extent. But I think the cost really is intended to be a cost recovery only. So that, that, that's really on that. What else? On, on the pilot program, obviously, it would be a pilot program. So I noticed that in the staff report, there was some language about criteria for future preferential parking programs. I think that's premature. I don't think we need to go there yet. I think we'd be doing a 12-month pilot program for here and then we would learn and, you know, from that experience and be able to actually create any kind of permanent program thereafter. I am a little bit concerned about the spillover concern, but in part, you know, this would be a pilot program and then we would know at the end of that program or during that program, how it's working and how it's not working. In terms of the options, I think my preference would be option two. I'm a little bit concerned about option one, going all the way to Marsh Creek Road for a couple of reasons. I do think there's a, there's a potential that it spills over anyway in some of those side streets. And if you go all the way to Marsh Creek Road, you're starting to hit the Clayton Community Park spillover, you're starting to hit the middle school park spillover at some days. There's the dog park near Pi where a lot of people, a lot of our residents use that dog park and they park on that, on the Regency Drive near there. So my vote would be in favor of the parking option number two. And obviously, like I said, if it's a pilot program, we'll have some data during the year and at the end of the year to, to decide what to do. In terms of, so I've also had a number of meetings, I met a number of times with Mr. Wiener and heard from other neighbors too, and I think we've all heard from, from some of the neighbors. I did hear a number of the residents here today asking if we could delay the vote so that they could also discuss. We don't get the materials until the Friday before either, but I, I get it. I did hear that a number of you would like to speak and if, I'm certainly in favor of that. I mean, if we continued by two weeks, that's not a huge delay and would certainly want to, see no problem in offering, for example, this space to be used by the residents to meet. So I think those are my thoughts for now. I don't, like I said, I don't think a two-week delay would really have any significant impact on the program overall. And if the residents want to talk further, I would certainly be supportive of that today. Vice Mayor Pierce.
Yeah, just putting the time factors together. I assume that the cost of the, the signage and the installation is going to require us to go out to bid. Are we planning on installing those with our own crews? And what would be the timeframe for, if we have to bid it? What do we assume the timeframe for turning a bid around and executing that would be?
Responding to your questions, at the value that we think it could be, let's just put it this way, anything over $5,000 is required to go out to bid. It's considered a public works project. In order to go out to bid, that means specifications have to be drawn up so that every contractor can bid on the same set of specifications. This cannot be done in-house because as you know, we have very limited number of maintenance personnel and this is the busy season. They're going to be embarking upon the various seasonal aspects related to the onset of the spring and the summer, particularly regarding weeds and so forth. So I don't know, I probably would invite Scott to come up since he would be the one charged with drafting the specifications going out to bid. But Scott, you want to give, give a venture on that one? The award of that contract would have to come back to the council.
Right. No, I understand that. And then we'd have to decide what the source of funding is and all of that. I, I get that that's still a policy decision, but just turning around the bid action itself takes a block of time. And I'm not quite sure what that would need to be.
I think that's where we came up with the 60 to 90 days in the, in the staff report, if I remember correctly, is it envisioned, you know, the block of time to get out to bid, the block of time to be at bid so contractors can evaluate. And then after that, to be able to mobilize them and get them to install the signs. It, it's a fairly lengthy process.
So, so to clarify, you're saying that 60 to 90 days from the day that you start putting your specs together to the day the installation is complete? Is that what you're saying? Or is that just the bid process?
In a good world, yes, that's what I would be saying. I, I still think that there's potential for needing additional time beyond that, but where I think we could have signs going into the ground, yes.
Okay. So two to three months to be optimistic and maybe more like four to be realistic.
I think that's, yes, that's correct.
And just as another factor-
From whatever time the direction is given.
Correct. Just another factor for consideration, being a small city and the fact that this may be a sizable amount of money for us, but it's going to be small, whether there's contractors that are available to do this and then become interested in doing this work for us. Because we've had complications with doing sidewalk repairs and gutter repairs and so forth. And contractors are taking the big dollar numbers and making their money on those ends as opposed to the small projects. So it's just something as a further consideration that we don't have control over.
Okay. Let me ask one question while I have Mr. Allman here. So, so the cost is about $750 per sign? I mean, this is sort of a, there's no way to get those signs cheaper in any way or what?
Kinkos?
The, the cost of it is really in the labor. That's, you know, you could, you can buy the sign probably for 50 bucks, the sign post probably for another 50, you know, but, but it's the cost of getting the program ready to go to bed and then the labor of installing it. The materials are actually, you know, fairly reasonable. But the labor involved to do it, especially when you're doing it in the way we're going to have to, where you're going to have to go out and pick these locations one by one. So that means that the crews that are installing them are working, you know, are working in a small area, having to do it with quite a bit of great, you know, care, so they can't move quickly. And, and that just adds up labor costs because they don't get any production. So I mean, that's, that's really where the expense is.
Okay. Thank you.
And excuse me, Mayor, just, just again, a reminder that those numbers are untested. It could be more, could be less. So I know oftentimes we get sticker shock based upon budgeted numbers, but those aren't real numbers until we get contracts in hand.
Okay. Did you finally finish?
That actually prompted one other thought when Scott was talking about the care that we'd have to put into it. We'd have to have a USA survey too, because back of sidewalk has almost always got utilities in it, right?
Sure. We, you know, I'm receiving on my computer, USA alerts on a daily basis, even for fences, where people are installing them. And it's wise and we recommend citizens and their contractors do that to avoid puncturing lines.
But that's another time factor. Okay. Councilmember Juan?
Yeah. You had mentioned that the number of available spaces versus the number of guest, guest permits available. I guess my question is to staff, are we able to issue more guest permits to residents greater than the number of spaces within the permit zone? In my reading of the staff report, the answer to that question is yes. So am I, am I wrong on reading that?
You, as the council, can determine the number of permits per household however you see fit.
So, okay, so that's affirmative? Okay. Okay. So I think, I mean, I do think that it's logical to, to kind of tie the number of permits to the number of ill spaces divided by number of houses. I mean, that makes sense on its face, but I think when we dive into the problem that we're trying to solve and the actual utilization, I don't think that should limit us. So that's, that's my take on that. I think when we're talking about cost recovery and staff time, when we're talking about outside vendors, I think that's a real cost outlay because that's cash out the door. But when we're talking about our internal time of processing and whatnot, I kind of think of that as sunk cost. That's time that we're not going to recover anyways. It's not additional cash. And so it is real money and when you do job costing it, you do allocate those costs accordingly. But if it's for internal costs, those are essentially sunk, I think. That's how I think of it.
If I might, Councilmember, I agree with you. The factor that we can't determine is the loss of productivity on other, there's only eight hours in a day and people administering a permit can only work on one thing at a time. But those are variables that can't necessarily have a cost incurred.
And I understand that there's a lot of things that are just unknown at this point and we're doing our, you have the best guess at this point. That's fine. I too, I too favor option number two as listed here. I think I would probably scratch A and B under those program options that were listed. And also, you know, if we're able to increase the number of guest passes, then I would also scratch the special event section, just because if we're able to increase the number of guest passes, overall, you don't need to have the administrative burden of having special event passes. I think that helps in at least a marginal way. So, yeah, I guess, you know, for the people that are, that are here, that are interested, if we are able to increase the number of resident passes and able to increase the number of guest passes, would you still be opposed? So that's, I, I don't think anyone would be opposed to that. So that, that's, that's my take on it.
That's, that's an interesting setup. We spent all this time with public comment talking about costs and, and it boils down to how many passes you get.
Yes, that is the real issue.
So really, that's, that's the issue.
Cost is also a real issue too.
We're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to capture you, sorry, if you want to come up here.
I don't think people mind paying for a program that they accept, but I think they have a tough time paying for a program that doesn't work for them. That's it. So I don't, I, I think the cost goes out the window if we make the changes. The cost objection.
Got it.
Because it becomes a value proposition.
Yeah. And the value prop gets better. And that's consistent with all of my conversations with everyone across the board. If you increase the number, if you increase the number on both sides and they're allowed to live in the way that, you know, is a normal person, then everyone's okay with paying the cost even though it is kind of a pain, you know, kind of a pain.
Sure.
So that, that's, that's where I think we're at. So like you said, a lot of people said postpone because they're looking at the proposal as it stands, two and two. But if the program didn't say two and two, they'd be like, let's do this thing.
So I have a question. I mean, if there's urgency to do it tonight, what's the right number? Cause I don't feel personally like we can issue more permits than there is space available. I, I also wonder if the permit should be limited somewhat to the number of vehicles registered to the resident, to that particularly home, minus the driveway spaces, just the driveway spaces. I'm going to assume everybody's garage is stuffed, okay? And they're not going to park in it, they want to use it for their workshop, whatever. But if we were to say the number of vehicles registered minus the driveway spaces, so we're not assuming everybody's going to park every car they own on the street. And then I would say maximum two guest spaces on top of that, because you're going to wind up overfilling the neighborhood if you're going to assume that, I mean, I, I just think you gotta have a limit somehow. Four guest spaces per every residential space. If you've got five cars and you put four spaces on, guest spaces on each one of those, Jeff, you've got 20 cars. And that's, that's ridiculous. Nobody in town has that many spaces.
No, and I don't think they do. But you, hold on, you know, she's addressing me directly, I think I can respond.
Hold on, let, let, hold on. Let me make a suggestion because I, I did look up when we were initially doing this, the city of Arinda has a pilot program near Bard Station. And it's one specific street that backs into the Bard Station where they've had issues. So what they did is they said, they had surveyed, they had 94 spaces within that street and they had calculated the number of houses that you had on both sides and they had determined we can do two per household. But then they said if there are any left over, in other words, if people don't get the two, then they allowed people to request up to four. So essentially, they said, we have 94, we'll do two per household, we'll give them, and I don't remember what the period was, but within certain amount of time, if those 94 aren't gone, based on the two per household, then you could request additional ones. But I, I do think that, I do think we're creating a problem- do think we're creating a problem if we're, if we have, for example, in option two, if we have 105 spaces and we're granting more than 105 permanent space, permits.
So I guess I completely disagree. I think, granted, we all, we know for a fact that we're allowed to issue more guest parking than is available. That's a choice that we can make. So saying that we can't do that, that's just wrong. We can do it. Well, whether or not we should do it is a different question. And you raised the point that, you know, we're going to create a problem where people are all wanting to do at the same time. To the first, in the first instance, I don't think that's true. That may happen on a rare occasion. And if it does happen, like I said earlier, we are no, they are no worse off than they are right now. Okay, so that's the status quo, and, and all other times you're better. And in those rare instances, you're at the status quo. And secondly, in talking with all the residents, they, to a T, will say they do not, they, their objection is not to other neighbors. If their neighbors have a part, have a party, and then, oh, all of a sudden I have a party, and then now we need to like figure out how to make this work, so be it. They're fine with that. So that is still, again, that is status quo, and they're fine with it because they're talking with people they know. They've lived here 10, 20, 30 years. They know these people. They're going to talk to each other, and it's not going to be like pandemonium where you have more than two cars and now, you know, I'm going to like tattle on you. That's, that's just not, that's not the concern of the residents. When I, when I listen to the actual concern they have, more guest passes doesn't create a problem. So I, that's, that, to be very clear, I specifically, like when I, when I ask these questions of the people, I ask them directly, very pointedly, what if you can't park there because your neighbor, every single neighbor has a party on the same day? Then what are you going to do? They're like, that's the same as what we have now. And in all other times, it's better. And as a pilot, if it turns out that more than two causes this great consternation between the, you know, between the folks, then we can address it. But to wring our hands over whether or not it should be two or three or where we draw the line, to me, that's, that's almost like just a delay. We know what the right answer is. The right answer is to let people park there and, and limit it to the neighbors, and they, they will figure it out if we let them.
So what's the number you're proposing? Unlimited?
I would, well, unlimited would be fine with me, but I think if we put an upper limit on it just for administrative burden relief, so we're not just doling them out like candy, you know, if you have something like eight.
Eight per household?
Sure. Do eight. You do eight, and there will be occasion where you want more than eight. Then you go to your neighbor and say, hey, I have 10 people coming over. Can I borrow two of your passes? And they'll say yes, and you're done.
That's right.
And you're done. And so then everyone's happy, and we can move on, and we, or not move on, we can begin to gather the information we need. That's, that's where I'm at.
Let me ask a question from the city attorney. Is there a concern that we be, we as the city would be selling a resident a parking permit and they're not able to use it? Is that a concern at all? No?
No, we're not guaranteed parking.
So, so we can sell a permit, but it comes with the caveat that there's no guarantees?
Correct. There's no guarantee that you'll actually get parking when you need to utilize it.
And if we chain the guest permit to the actual resident permit, you're paying for the resident permit and the guest is just gratis. So I don't think that there's like consideration being given for the, for the guest. It just comes with it as part of it.
So you're saying eight permanent spots per household in addition to four?
Guest permits.
Guest permits.
Yeah, the larger number's on the guest, and the permanent resident permit, or resident parking permit is tied to the number of vehicles registered. So you actually have to have a real vehicle registered there, because that makes sense. I think that's reasonable. If you have one registered vehicle there, you shouldn't have like five permanent parking spaces. But if you own more vehicles because you have more humans living in your house that drive and have their vehicles registered there, then that to me seems reasonable to tie the number of, I'm trying to separate between resident and guest, right? So the resident is tied to the number of vehicles registered, and the guest is just some arbitrary number that we pick that's high enough to take care of most of the need. I think eight sounds like a good number. It's lucky.
So you're saying four parking spaces they already have within the household, one permanent space per registered vehicle, and then eight guest permits per household?
If they request it, yes. And again, this is a, this is a voluntary program, right? No one has to, no one has to pay if they don't want to. You don't have to sign up. So.
Okay. Let me, let's hear from other council members.
Can I ask for some clarification on that?
Go ahead.
So, understanding the recommendation from staff, the residential permits would be registered to specific cars, specific license plate, all that. The guest permits could not be used by any of those residential vehicles. Is that right?
That is what is written in the staff report, yes.
Yeah, that was the recommendation. So they couldn't pay for one residential permit and use four guest ones for the rest of the cars in their family?
Correct.
If they live there. Okay.
As written.
Okay, so here's, here's the second question then. If, because I get neighborhoods that get along, I understand that. We borrow parking spaces in each other's driveways all the time. It's something we do. But the guest permits would have to be tied to the specific house? I mean, we wouldn't know whether the guest is visiting House A or House B or House C. So I guess the neighbors could share them. I mean, they'd be registered to each house, but we don't know whether the guest is going to that, in that door or in the neighbor's door. So Neighbor A could take their guest permits and, because Neighbor B's having a party and needs 20 permits for guests, they could collect them from their neighbors for the day, hope they get them back, and then, and then do it that way. Is that legal under the recommended process?
Yeah, I'll let the city attorney respond to the legality. But yes, as you've envisioned it, I think the trade, from what I understand, the tradeoff is that with the additional eight guest permits, and there could be horse trading and whatnot, they could float all around, that is better than the special events, because it satisfies the ability to accumulate or parse out those guest permits. You're correct, getting the borrowed tractor or broom back, you know, may be, you know, difficult, or people have to knock on the doors. But if they all know one another and who they gave them to, then we hope that they'll, you know, they'll find the right home back. But that's my understanding. I don't think there's any legality against that.
No, there wouldn't be a problem legally with that.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
So the, the overall, I don't want to lose sight of what we're trying to accomplish. And I think relief for the residents is the, is the main thing that we're trying to accomplish on this. And in the end up, we're going to try now to put together a program that will gather the data that will tell us whether or not relief is even possible in that area. So at this point, I think it's, I think it's imperative that we take a look at doing something to get this thing off the ground in order to gather that data. The minutia of how many traded tickets and things, it's, that's all going to fall in, into line, and we're going to find that out, whether or not this works or it doesn't work. But if we issue all of these permits and guest passes and everything, and the hikers are still there, and there's still trouble, and still litter, and all of that, then, then we would have struck out. But at least we would know. So.
Knowing is always better than not knowing.
Always better than not knowing. So I think, I think we need to find some way here to get this thing going. And, and the fact, the fact of matter is, we're talking 90, 120 days from now, maybe July, August before anything would even get started. But, but I think we're going to know pretty quickly after the program gets started if this is actually doing its job of deterring the non-permit people from parking in that area. Why hikers don't park down past Rialto, I have no idea. I don't understand why people don't, I mean, I know there are some situations with seniors and things like that, but generally, people should be parking past Rialto, more toward the park, community park, and walking up. I don't see why that should be such a problem for the hikers. So we'll see if that actually, if that actually happens. But we need to get, we need to get something going here. If, if we need to continue this, by the way, I'm out all next week and I'm on the ad hoc committee, but, so it'll be more than two weeks that we'll have to continue the conversation. But, but if the, if the residents that are here and, and that have spoken and the people that have written in are willing to accept this compromise to get this off the ground now, then I don't see any reason why we should stand in the way.
Vice Mayor Pierce?
Question for staff. Could we direct staff to go ahead and initiate going out for bids and try to nail down and get that process underway since that's two to four months to get the installation of the signs? I mean, if we choose an option tonight, we'd know how many signs we need. We could decide just that piece without deciding immediately the number of residential permits and the number of guest permits, because the signage is dependent on the option, right?
Yes.
So the time, the most time consuming part of it would be that. Yes, it's going to take a couple of meetings to get the ordinance in place, but that's not anywhere near three to four months.
Well, allowing me to respond, number one, I think the proposal is that it be initiated by resolution.
Okay, then resolution's even one meeting. Okay, so that's only one meeting.
And you are correct. If you said staff were comfortable about doing something, so let's go along with it.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Somebody doesn't have a mic. Whose mic is not working, Larry?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good, good, good.
Send him back into the room. The, first off, I'll go back over for people. You do this by resolution. Secondly, if you're inclined to do something along the permit program, yes, staff can go back, out immediately, and we can have Mr. Allman start preparing a scope. We can put that out to bid. By going out to bid, you are not compelled to award bid. So if it comes back and you decide that there's a lesser program, we could also bid that as alternate bids, depending upon the number of signs. And that would allow you, that would allow us to get started, and then you could still resolve over the number of per, actual permits.
So we could leave option A, option B, or one and two, I guess is what we're calling these, the actual area covered by it as two alternates in the bidding process for the signage?
Sure. Yeah, and once again, we envision, we didn't include the signage in here, but for instance, people had said, hey, once you are past the last house and down the spur, the signage would actually change and say, you know, you know, park, parking permissible or open parking down there, as well as along the areas, along Seminary Ridge where there, it's not abutting or adjacent to a home. Again, because as you described, there'll be arrows, parking between these areas and so forth.
So we could get that process started and then finalize what we want in the resolution after the neighbors have a chance to think it through and start adding up the number of vehicles and figuring out what really is comfortable.
Yeah, that's the easy part because, at least it is now, because if you determine the number of passes, the program can't be implemented without signage.
Right. Okay.
So are we at least, so we do have two options in front of us. Is there at least concurrence amongst us between the two options? I heard myself and Councilmember One advocate for option two. Is there anybody here who would like option one?
I think two's at least intrusive as a way to start.
I agree with that.
I think we'll wind up with a whole lot bigger area once we get done, but I'm willing to start with the smaller area. But I think we get bids for both.
And we're not considering the rest of the ordinance at this point, scratching A and B and any of that.
I mean, this has to come back to us anyway, right? Because the, on the-
To accept a bid.
Right.
Well, the bid isn't necessarily part of the resolution. It's an implementation of the resolution.
But timing wise?
Correct. Yeah, there's no, there's no rush for a resolution night. If you're giving us a green light to prepare the scope of the bid and go out, then we'll, that's what we'll start on, and that would allow time for the residents to talk about it more. I think I heard that, you know, the ad hoc committee or Councilmember Wolf may not be available. Also, just to note, our city attorney and our police chief will not be available for the April 2nd meeting.
Just for clarification, I'll be here for the second meeting, but all next week, I'm out.
Right. I was referring to the ad hoc committee and meeting with the residents.
Okay, so just to beat a dead horse here, it's going to take us a while to get the bids back, probably a month or a little longer, Scott, yes? Six weeks, maybe, maybe eight? Two, okay. So two months. That gives us a few extra meetings at which we could do the talking we need to do. And then we could actually agendize it for the same meeting as we consider bids to adopt the resolution.
Certainly.
And those two could be coincidental, then for efficiency sake and the time of the neighbors and all of that, to make the final decision on how the permit process works and the length of area we want to restrict.
Well, correct. What I'm hearing is you're kind of drifting towards option two anyway, and I don't know how the, the results of the bid have bearing on the, the number of permits.
No, I'm just saying time wise.
Sure.
It, we wouldn't, I mean, because we wouldn't need to do any more than a single meeting to adopt a resolution.
True.
And that could be done at the same time as we accept a bid.
True.
I would move that's what we do.
Which part? Going out to bid?
That we go out to bid and, and get, actually, I would like to know what the difference is between option one and option two price wise. If there's any economy of scale, there might be a contractor who says, five signs, I'm not going to do it. But maybe if you make them 10 or 15, I might, I know it's more. I'm not counting the number of signs.
No, no, I'm not, I mean, there's another way to slice that is to install the poles and don't put a sign on it. I mean, you know.
Story poles.
What's that?
Story poles.
Well, you can call them what you want.
And if we have, if we have leftover signs, Mr. Grumman wants them in his house.
No, I, okay, but yes, we could do that. But the, my-
Well, but that's, that's the intensive labor.
I understand. My, my motion would be that we get the bids on option one and two for the installation of the signs. And then at the meeting where we decide on the bid, then we will finalize the, the, the resolution. And I would assume that maybe we can rely on our subcommittee to nail down the details of what the neighborhood thinks they want for numbers.
I think that's fair. Although I would, I would amend just slightly and say that in addition to bidding out the signs, we should also include the cost of the known materials that we're talking about, just so that we have, because right now I understand that we have, you know, our own estimates, but I'd like to get more, more tangible figures around the dollars of the other, at least what is known to be the cost, like materials and the actual signs themselves and whatnot. So I think that's, that's prudent to understand what those costs are as well.
Well, the signs would be included in that. You're talking the softer materials like the permit itself that sits in the car.
Yeah, just in, in general, the cost of the materials and whatnot that we know will be required if we were to implement.
So Vice Mayor Pierce, you made the motion. Are you willing to amend it?
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay.
Second?
So that motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously.
Do we need to move to postpone the other item? Or is that part of it?
No, that's part of it. It comes back. And that gives us probably at least two months for the neighbors to talk about it and figure out what they want before we actually vote to install signs.
And then?
At least two months. Because we got to get a bid back, and that's going to take two months. Once we award a bid, boy, you better have an answer because we're going to start putting signs in. signs in.
Okay, so can I ask you a question? On the proposal, did it say we needed to have...
Can't hear him.
We, I'm sorry, we can't hear you either, and we know the neighbors can't, the...
No, I was loud enough, relax.
I know, but your neighbors back home who are trying to stream this can't hear you talking.
Sorry about that. And by the way, I apologize for the outburst two months ago, so. On the proposal, wasn't there something about an 80% approval by the residents for this to go through?
I think that was a draft.
So what do you need from us now?
I think that was to expand the program to another neighborhood.
That's for subsequent.
Yeah, that was for an add-on. So if El Molino decides they get all the spillover and they decide they want to come in, they've got to go through a process, which we have not yet established.
Okay, so you just need like majority rules off of Regency and Rialto, is that kind of what you need?
All we're asking for now is you to help figure out what the number of permits really ought to be and be reasonable about it. And figure it out.
And you guys are okay letting us borrow this for like a day or two?
I think we'll have to let staff work through the process on that. I don't, I can't, it's not my building.
Just tell us how you want to request that, and we'll go through the process, because there's, we have to notify everybody on the streets, so that, you know, everybody comes, so that nobody feels that they're, they're being blindsided, so.
Sure. The best way to do it is to call City Hall, ask for Sunny Graham, S U N N I, she's the facility coordinator. She can then let you know dates that this room is available, and then you can back in through that, and then you let her know when you'd like to use it.
All right, so after we meet and get our stuff together as a group, then do we get ahold of you guys and talk with you guys about it, or how do you want to do this?
I think the idea was you go back to the ad hoc committee members.
Okay. Gotcha. Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Would you request our participation in that?
I'm sorry, sir?
Would you request our participation in that, or do you want to do that on your own?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I mean, absolutely.
Then I would suggest you, you think of some dates that work for you and for the subcommittee, and let one of them go ahead and do the application, they can get it in for you.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
And having, having conversations amongst yourselves might not be a bad idea, given the run-up to the meetings.
We were hoping to have like two meetings, one just ourselves to make sure everybody's on board and there's no hurt feelings, and that we don't have people threatening lawsuits.
Well, we have, yeah, we have some letters, yeah, okay.
And then after we get our collective stuff together, get together with the ad hoc committee and talk to you guys and see how we do with that. Does that sound fair?
That sounds great, yeah.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for all of you, I mean, I know it's taking us a little time to figure this out, but I appreciate...
I have no idea how many times Jeff Weiner's texted me and emailed me yesterday and today.
Yeah.
Haven't gotten any tweets, Jeff.
Thank you. I think we all appreciate sort of the cooperative approach from your neighbors, and hopefully we'll all come out in a solution that works for everybody. So thank you. We'll move on to item nine, which is any council items, are there any requests by any council members for any future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll, we have no closed sessions tonight, which means we are adjourned until April 2nd. Thank you.